Call.
Mr. Caproso, here. Commissioner Ledermark?
Here.
Commissioner Rondo?
Here.
Commissioner Hebert?
Here.
Glad you're here. Making this our role.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Free public comments? Public comment going once? Yep, want to stand up?
I'm Tom Curry from Mindstone Township. And I have some questions concerning the, uh, resolution that you got here. Got some questions going on at first, uh, who on this board, or on this commission, has enough knowledge or training? To, um, have the, have the right for the LMAs to, for the city, or, and we have, for public health, who is, do you think you'd be able to attend that race?
It's comment, we're, we just listened to the comment.
Who would have approved that, um, the wording in that language, or in that, um, resolution that you have? And, uh, who has the, uh, what I asked about the medical knowledge? Um, frankly, I strongly oppose this resolution. Firstly, I have given the Western Board before along with me on that, I haven't had a chance to talk to them, or know about it. And also, according to the minutes that I saw, where, um, discussion, where it's limited to non-agenda items. That's on your agenda, so I'm going against that, but, um, according to the O B U Act, you can't limit the discussion or public comment on agenda items. You have to, you can limit non-agenda items, uh. And have any township officials been notified of this resolution that they were representing for?
Have you?
Have any, have any public, or have any township officials been notified of the resolution that they were considering? Thank you.
You do.
Hi, Barb Ivey, Autaring Township. So I'm addressing Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Um, just an FYI, the, um, LMAs have never imposed an emergency restriction so far. Everybody I've spoke to at LMAs is aware. Um, the county board actually does not have the ability to end an emergency measure. That's only up to the emergency manager, so that part of the resolution is basically null and void. If we were to have another crisis like we did in twenty twenty, um, you all should, everybody should be willing to wear a mask or a face shield if that's more comfortable, to protect the health and welfare of your fellow Alder County residents. This should be something you all care about. If your goal with this resolution is to send a message to Lansing, then you must put this to a county vote and not to be decided by five people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I follow up on what Tom said. Um, I'm Susan Rans from, um, Mutesing Township. Um, I did do a little research. I did my own research as a free American, and I discovered that none of you are an immunologist, an epidemiologist, a doctor, or a public health professional. And I choose, as a free American, to listen to doctors, immunologists, public health officials, immunology, I mean, uh, epidemiologists, for the advice what to do in the context of a pandemic. I currently am suffering from one COVID from the last one. I don't trust new people to tell me what my health should be. And so I highly encourage you to listen to people who know what they're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Would play? I'm gonna read through the, well, the, you know, and then you got one more.
We got one more, we get these people further.
Hi, um, I'm Mary Jo Haller in Toronto, and I'm Rock River Township. And I, I echo all the same sentiments that I've heard, much as I would never demand that you all wear a mask if you are choosing to take that risk, um, because it is an inalienable right if you choose to, um. But where I get really stuck, because I'm looking at the agenda, and I'm seeing all this good stuff about what I assume is your scope of what needs to occur, and then I get down to the resolution part, and I'm like, how does this fit? And then I keep thinking about how divisive everything has been, and how people are not together, and, and then I'm even double confused as public servants, why you would perpetuate more diverse, just anger. Um, I don't, I don't understand that part. I really don't. I don't, I don't know what's in it for you. That's the part I keep thinking, what's in it for them? What did they get out of this? And I, I keep coming up, well, I think Stand Up Alder County gets something out of this. And I think there's a regular, strong group of stand-up, you should be very familiar with Stand Up Alder County, because they're working all the time, right, Mick?
What's that?
Stand Up Alder County. You're, you're aware of them. So I'm thinking this is only creating more, and I would rather be a whole, where you guys are working on pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? First time?
Joel, you read some of the?
All right. Uh, the opposed, actually all came in Dr. Back, Marilyn Bakwork, John Tate, and Victoria Woods. In favor, Bruce McKeaton, Peterson, Don Rondo, Kathy Thad, Jane Ferroncho, Julianne Vizanra, Don Vizanra, Don Johnson, Helen Westfall, Cindy and Dana Reedig, and then Bill Higgin, Athenea Rees, is that you if you want to do that?
Sure enough, yeah.
Uh, I understand if the other county commissioners want to create a check and balance with LMAs. Checks and balances are a win-win and prevent bureaucratic overreach. Each and every other county citizen should be thankful that they will have a little more say in their own and, and family's health decisions. The corporate medical systems in the region used to need some resistance, and they might as well get some from our PACD and my personal medical decisions, let freedom ring.
The end of them?
That's it.
Full comments, five agenda. Agenda look, anybody you got any changes?
Do, he's got to find the right number by like four door. We just have to add it?
Yeah. Uh, if you so choose.
Yeah. Uh, Brian Hill is now on vacation. He's not gonna be available to be, to consult on any of the, like, snowplow bid now.
Yeah.
So, like, amend the agenda, so we can go ahead and open that bid tonight. Uh, or bids, I don't know how much you'll receive. They would do uh, Friday, uh, that we would, you can put them into our package to vote on next week, instead of waiting for another whole month to take care of that. Would we amend the agenda to open those tonight?
Um, are you ready?
Are they?
Dean?
And you're, where is that?
What do you think? Did I ask the question? Joel, did, um, former, uh, commissioner talk to you today about last year's bid?
Did she go and ask if there was a current contract yet?
Is there, isn't there?
There is.
So in other words, that bid from last year is this year's?
It is. It has not expired. And it's planted for him. It is not the example that is still the twenty twenty-four, three, four, five bid.
So we, this bid, we don't? That?
This is yours, because?
The bid is already going to?
If it's already in, yeah. We should have either analyzed it when they want to repair the damages, or because I think we looked into that. There's nothing saying, because we put it off for bids for one, two, or three years, and it was never actually put down of what they accepted of one, two, or three.
Just they accepted.
They accepted a bid, but it was never put down as what they accepted. So hopefully we'll do that.
Well, right, now, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is even if we open a bid, we still have the right to reject any and all bids.
Correct, yes.
But if you already have a bid, odds are that the, I don't know how many bids we have, and I'm not gonna ask you all, but odds are, the bid we have.
But he's already. Mike, I think he's already has the bid for this year.
Well, but Dean said, we're not sure, because they didn't specify when they accepted it, where they're taking it for one, two, or three years.
Bunch of damage that was done that is not.
And they have not repaired it.
Repaired it. From the previous year. In the past years, they've repaired it. This year, they decided not to repair it.
Got an answer for us, sir?
I do. If there's a bid that's been, uh, a request for proposal, and bids come in, and then a company either, um, begins work pursuant to the bid process, because it was awarded the bid by the board, that means a contract exists between the county of Alder and that company. And that contract is for a term theoretically. So I don't know what the bid said, I don't know what the contract says, but what that bid said probably is the de facto contract that governs the relationship the board has, or the county has with that company. Um, now, if they're not performing to that con, that contract, like, not repairing things, uh, we probably should go through a process to cancel, or you could go through a process to cancel a contract that exists. Or, I mean, there's nothing preventing you from maintaining multiple contracts for the same thing. It's your decision. I also have an office trying to prefer you not to do that, because, uh, you know, our money can be better used. But, like, I think Commissioner Rondo said, or Commissioner Caproso, open bids. Maybe, what if a bid comes in at one dollar from Superior Service? It might be worth it to, to, to cancel and pay damages. So, you know, you should, if you got them, read them. And just to let no one, and I don't know, I'm thinking there is one there for my son. I've been gone, he's got back. If there is, then I'm not into this.
Right.
So.
But then, do we, if we've already got a bid from him and we've accepted it, then are we responsible for that bid?
I think there, uh, a contract exists.
Say, let's say it was thirty thousand dollars. Then we owe thirty thousand dollars. I'm just picking it up. Then we owe thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, contract exists. We have to perform our end of the contract. That would be paying money. They'd be performing a service. If they're not performing a service, then you should, uh, figure that out.
So, where I think we're sitting.
If they're not performing a service, we should probably talk to Mr. Zappa. Or what other, other assigned council will be willing to help us with that, because it might be as simple as a phone call or a letter. To say, hey, we have a service that's not being performed or under contract, please perform the service, or we will seek to do secriminal action up to and including canceling contracts for non-performance. We do, we have a three-year contract, is it three-year? Sounds like we're locked in for, you know, to pay that.
That's who we're trying to get out, is, we never had nothing saying that we are additionally insured, so anything that gets, happens, accidents or anything on our property, we can't go after them. We can't go after the insurance on us. So we have damage done that we can't really do anything about, so we wanted to change that wordage.
Did the bid procedure, assuming there's no written contract that came after, did the bid procedure say anything about you having to name us as additional insurance?
The new one did.
New one does.
The new bit, but not the old bit.
The one now.
So we're stuck in a contract that doesn't. Oh, isn't the greatest contract?
No.
I can tell you that the, the things get loud, as far as I'm concerned, but again, I, I got a four-wheel drive, so I think it's fine when it's not loud.
And that's not, it's the damage that gets done besides that.
I think that's probably something we probably should address with the company directly, um. And if they're unwilling to mitigate or to perform, then, um, we should talk about that.
So do you recommend, should we just hold off on the bids until we find out more on that side, Zappa?
Well, those bids are only gonna last so long, um, before somebody says, comes back and says, hey, I don't care what you open, you know, price of diesel has changed, uh, it's not our bid anymore. So either way, it's not gonna be approved till next week. You only follow up with the attorney, and then
Good idea.
Either way, I'll be down next week for discussion when.
Good idea.
Sounds good.
Well, that keeps me motivated.
Motion, we can.
For not putting him on the agenda.
I thought you scratched him.
Strapped him, I'm scratching.
Well, then now I gotta get where this.
Yeah, I did not know we had a, I thought we were at the end of a contract, that's why we were not at all.
Crossed my attention by your other, and X.
Made sense to do.
I read some of the email.
Oh. For a good minutes, number six?
No, we have to approve the agenda.
We took the agenda as it all printed in for us.
Right. I'll sort it.
So now we're back to three again. Yeah. We'll on the agenda then? Uh, Commissioner Caproso?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ledermark?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hebert?
Yes. Minutes.
While we're here, if I can approve them. Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is that a sign on? Yep. Uh, number seven, Neil Polba, discuss ADA compliance concerns within Elbe County, City of Houston. Yeah, um, you guys received the, the packet I sent you on, uh, the compliance, and then also some, um, ideas I had in the benefits. And, uh, for the public, you can send that to the public if they need to know what, what I sent you guys, but what I want to do is also provide you solutions to this, because, uh, without, you know, with the plan, it's hard to initiate, where do you start, things like that. So one solution, number one solution would be hire ADA, certified ADA coordinator for the county. And, um, number two would be uh, in, instill a budget in, in the county budget, and also any future master plans, such as Parks and Rec. There is no budget for ADA compliance. Number three is I'm willing to, I'm a certified ADA coordinator myself, but I will be willing to be a resource to the county and the city of Mutesing. Um, as far as, uh, creating a support system for you, because of, you know, uh, a lack of staff, and it's a, it's a big undertaking. Also, um, I can provide grant writers, um, some, uh, other consultants that are, uh, pretty used, such as disability advocate organizations. Um, and also, uh, I will be, you know, I could be hands-on with you guys. So I, I'm not gonna just say, here, do this, and then walk away. I want to be part of this, and I want you guys to, uh, help, you know, facilitate this. Uh, the reason I said this is, according to your charter, the county charter, four oh three, page thirty-nine, um, it says, the county of Elbe County acknowledges that all of its buildings and facilities are in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act nineteen ninety. The county hereby resolves to abide by all of the requirements of Americans with Disabilities Act. So right now, the county is in uh, a breach of trust with the, any grants that you get, there's a policy and, and requirements under any of those funding grants you get, that says you have to follow the ADA. Um, and also, the citizens, you know, the trust factor there is breached because there is no compliance whatsoever. The, the major, the, the two major buildings right now is this building, that's not compliant, and the town hall. Those are two government buildings that you guys, I mean, through legal, you have lawyers, you have consultants, you have everything, and it is a shame that even your two buildings aren't compliant. So I recommend that you guys basically work together with the city townships in this county to get it compliant, because we have citizens like me that like to go out to different establishments, and the business owners are losing money from me not being able to get into your sta, their establishments. Um, tax revenue from people that want to move here, love the outdoors, but it's not compliant. So I see that you guys want to figure out ideas of new tax revenue. Well, this would be a new tax revenue also, so the one, the, the benefits would be, huge benefit would be to to have a exclusion community, not, I'm sorry, inclusion co, community, I'm sorry, um, and then not exclusion community, because you're basically telling the disabled, eh, you know, whatever. But you need to do this. It's not a, it's not if we should do this, it's you need to do this. It's federal law. So I will be wi, like I said, I'm more than willing to help. And I'm a huge resource to get this started, to get you in the right direction. But there needs to be action. I, I've heard that you guys have had presented this before to this committee, and no, no act has been done. It's been ignored. And I am not gonna ignore this. This is, this needs to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary.
Anybody have any questions?
I got a couple for you, um. This is the first time we've heard of it, that I've heard it in on the board, so excuse me for any of that. Um, if we do have something that can immediately be addressed, we'd be very welcome to hear it and try to address it. Um, this is very, I thought most, everything that has to be built has to be ADA. I do a lot of work with Forest Services and stuff. Everything that we do there has to be ADA compliant. Um, I would have thought this building would be ADA compliant. I, you know, so if there is something, or very, me personally, receptive to anything that you have to say.
What I'm trying to do is just, I'm not poking fingers at everybody.
Right.
I'm saying it's a community. We need to work together to have transparency, and with me, I know the res, I know the laws, I know it's compliant, but we bring in other resources. And hiring an ADA coordinator, I, right now, I don't have enough time to commit full-time. So I want to be a resource, and I like that role better, because then I can be a liaison for the county. But, uh, number one, get an ADA coordinator. Hire one, like I want to know, because they will tell you, what they'll do is basic audit. I can do an audit with you guys and audit this whole county. You won't like the audit. I looked at your Parks and Rec's master plan. There's, there's puns that you need to fix. I've been to those places personally. Um, so there's a lot to dive into, and that's why I want to build that support system and be a liaison to the county to, to, to hammer this out. But it is an issue, like I said, that, um, if you want any more grant funding, you better get on this, because that's attached. This law is attached to that grants, any of those grants. Even presently, those grants that you have now, you're in violation of it, and you're violation of your charter. So I want to not say, oh, you're bad people. No, it's, we need to get educated. I need to educate. We need to be open to, uh, community to help. There's a lot of knowledgeable people in this community knowing about ADA. And it's not just for me or all the other disabled. It's eventually, don't ever say it's never gonna happen to you. Here's one story, one lady was perfectly fit and healthy. She went biking with her husband, hit a crack in the sidewalk, went forward, now she's a paraplegic. There is, uh, another gentleman that used to live here, used to ride watercycles, I don't know, Mr. Singer. He was, uh, now, he, he became a paraplegic and passed away, but he was perfectly healthy. This other woman was perfectly healthy. So don't ever say it'll never happen to you. Um, and you're gonna need these services. And these, the easier way to get inside and out these buildings and, you know, widen up for you to go with even the restaurants. You know, I know, like, you guys don't, don't realize it through your eyes, but you can see this stuff through my eyes, another disabled person. We have a lot of disabled vets. People, when we were growing up, we don't complain. We just kind of take it. And now that I've grown older, it's like, I, I'm not complaining, but I'm not going to take it anymore. I'm saying, here, there's, this needs to be fixed. Uh, this is not fun for me on a daily basis to struggle. And, um, but, yeah, I mean, I can personally go all day long throughout this county, but it would take months to point it out. But, um, but I will be assisting, uh, when you want to go forward, because I, I know the area very well, and then if somebody else comes in, I can get some organizations to do the, to do the evaluation, because that's what you guys are gonna need. Just establish that budget. So there's steps around that, but like I said, it.
Do you know, Qpad has anything with that?
I can't think of anything right now. They'd be more of a.
I mean, they do a lot of remaps and things like that, but something that pretty would think.
We would have to bring it for the rec, each person definitely does things on there, but we could bring it to them to see who could take on it. But they've got a lot in their plate, so.
That's what I heard.
To do, I mean, that's.
So that may even fall under like, okay.
But the thing is, can I inter, interrupt? Um, there is training programs, so anybody that wants to wear that hat, I can give you resources about doing the training. I did the training myself personally last year. It's a one-week course, four credits. It's pretty simple. But back into certified, and with that certification, it helps to build trust in the community, and also builds, uh, with any grant funding, it's it helps you get through that grant funding for that, especially when you're doing, um, particular money for compliance and things like that. Um, and I can help you with the search for ADA coordinator. I'm not, like I said, I will be hands-on. As long as you show proactiveness and want to work with me, I'll be more than happy to, to oblige, but I will get the rest of the community to support too.
That's what we're, I was just wondering, if we have lots, we're a small community. So to hire a full-time person for a lot of our stuffs, we hire it all, like, we have Qpad that does a lot of our grant writing stuff and different things like that. They do multiple, for multiple counties, so, so I was just wondering, if they had.
I have a resource for you. It's out of market. There are eighty, certified ADA coordinators out of there. So that's a resource I can help you with. Yeah, they're a bigger organization, they're a disability advocacy, agency, nonprofit. So, like I said, I could help you connect, make those connections, and see what, maybe come in and, you know, be a liaison for you.
Well, I appreciate you pointing it out, man.
Yeah. Do you know who that man is, or person is? It's UpSail. UpSail? UpSail, um, they have senior ADA coordinators, just like me, but.
They fall under UpCap's umbrella, I believe.
Oh, yeah, but they know me personally, and, um, you can ask Pursue Anderson.
I, I've just been learning my UpCap stuff before I go to my meeting.
But again, give me a call. You have my contact information.
Yep.
So you can email me anytime, you know, I'll try to, you know, set this up for you.
And just a quick one, any, like, the run for access into here? Have you seen any big ones?
Huge. You're, you're just, your ramp from the parking lot up here is too steep, and it, I've, I've actually gotten stuck on it, and that L-Train bus driver had to, wait.
You mean the curb there, Neil?
That curb, that's, yeah, it's really.
That would have been, and see, and here's the, well, and here's the kicker, that's an MDOT-approved compliant curb.
Yeah, but the problem with MDOT, they don't have anybody certified ADA. Is, that certification is huge. I know they're MDOT.
Yeah, well, I know, looks the other way a lot. Just finished, well, then they don't either, though, because the city, just had to redo Superior Street, and we got it tore up for two years. For MDOT to even give us money to help fix this, to help, not even pay for all of the street they tore up, running trucks on it for two years. We had to change all the curving, and we had to change all the approaches.
But I can tell you right now.
And I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying.
No, 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 but I can tell you right now.
A lot of fingers.
Tell us what is, what isn't. Those, that, that curving and all that is not compliant. It's too steep. I can, that's the thing I can help you with, and the certified ADA coordinator can, because what they're thinking is ADA compliant is not what is really ADA compliant.
And, you know, and that's something that would have to be taken up to the states, because
Exactly.
Because to get the grant money, you have to comply with what the state says. This is what you have to do.
Exactly, but, but there's a lot of.
Sometimes our hands are a little bit tied on some of that stuff, so.
What I'm saying is that you got brand-new streets in the city. They're not conducive to compliance. They're actually dangerous.
True.
Grand race. But MDOT, and then state, and I hate to say it, state just wants that money, and anybody else that helps him out, there's a lot of I don't agree with the state's compliance, because they're not following the actual twenty-ten ADA building code standards, and they're, the actual ADA. They don't work together, but the state needs to follow the federal ADA law. So that's something later, if you guys, if everyone wants to take it. If you guys know, everyone take issue with it. That's something later, but as far as this county. You guys have been this aboard, that's why I want to help educate and bring in some more educators. And more resources to, to educate everybody, you know, like you said, we don't know. And I wouldn't know either until I got in this wheelchair and I was, well, you know, walking in crutches, it's a total different world. When I was in crutches, I didn't realize a lot of the height. Until I got my wheelchair, so. I don't blame you guys, I want to educate you guys, and, and then for. We need an emergency plan, like we were talking about, uh, I see the, you guys here. A emergency plan for the disabled, like during the pandemic, what if situations? Nobody know, knew that there's gonna be a tornado going through the Grayling or Gaylor or something like that, who would pick that up, what have? What happens if there's a tornado comes through here, what do we do for, so there's a lot of intricacies that we have to look at. And you have, the UP has the biggest census of disabled vets in the country. So we have a lot of disabled vets that don't come out, you don't see them in the public, we want to see them in the public, but there's no accessibility. And there's a lot, like I said, some stores, some restaurants, I can't get into, I don't. At the boycott. So I can't get in. Or they can't get in, so you want this. Uh, a vital uh, vitality of uh, not vitality, a, 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 a jumping community. Like you're saying, how do we get in revenue, well, we have it right here, we just need to go and say, this is. You know, going to uh, you know, spend our do- spend your dollars here. Encourage you to come out. But right now, as a stand, there's that separation in the community that I feel. That there's, we need to. Build, bridge that gap. And say, hey, we're doing something for you guys, and that's all we need to do, is build that trust.
So you've got.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll do some more looking, I feel like I've seen something in that packet that they sent me to.
We have different ones that we. Work with anyway, so, like, keys on the board, upcap and weeds, that's all.
Yeah, I'll work with you, I mean, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, definitely give them the slots that you want, thank you.
Yeah. Do you have any questions? Take me on. Put out three Humvees. On county website, November fourteen through seventeen. For bids, minimum bid a thousand dollars.
And that is a winner takes all, correct?
Yeah.
That is a per vehicle.
No.
Cause I would give it all three.
They're in two different places.
Right, two of Graham Ray and there's one. It uh, over paneling.
Delivering.
Pick up all.
You want this to uh, you want to action item on this thing, to put it all, if they wanted fourteen seventies, they have actually today.
They were federal surplus from years ago.
Um, and we put them all on this. Did we get them to, we own them in hold, they were put out to the federal. Sometimes they just let us use them, and when we're done, we gotta give back. Yeah, we have a title, we have titles on that. Any questions to go to Graham Ray? Where are they at?
I don't, I don't know where they're physically at, but I know there's two of them.
Yeah, just made a call over there last week.
Yeah, undershare, or physically where in their address, I've been working with them to try to get this.
Any questions? I know, I thought we had one.
We need a motion to put those bids out.
Correct.
We'll make a motion.
Second. Commissioner Caprosa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Livermore? Commissioner Elton?
Yes.
Commissioner Odo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bieber?
Yes.
Number nine, over colony, remodification. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, R. I've got a little one, Joe. Remodification is a. There there goes around and, and updates. Uh, we corner markers. So it's a state. They've been doing it since, we've become a state, so every, every year they go. Corner by corner, with a certain number of corner markers, they identified the grant. Uh, they, that year. Yeah, after four forty, seven forty-three, next year's only gonna be about thirty. Um, but as part of the content, the grant, uh, process, we do have to bid that out, um. We skipped twenty-three, we got this, so. It expired twenty-two. If I can get that out, and they said by December, um, meeting. We'll be good to go. That's the sound app? Any questions for us, I should say?
I do. When, um. Are they doing certain town shops, are they doing?
Yeah, so.
City or what?
They'll pick a section, tons of range, and they'll, they'll do. Uh, many, and by, they're gonna do a, a squared grid. This time they were in, you know, on train. Like all on train. They're on train like. Know the name. Corner markers. I guess it's five, four, five, but, but, what five by five? So they did. And it's a four forty, they do the half, they'll do half markers.
They do right down to forties?
No, no.
Forty corner, forty.
I get that.
And I have a map, I can show you which one.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah. They give us a report, every year we have a peer group meeting. Maybe they're interested in coming to see where. We do both that, I can probably.
Who does do this anyway? A, a lot of private.
Yeah. It's one company right now.
Oh, okay.
They're the only company that ever bids. So, it's been them for question time.
Oh.
But yeah, it is a little answering.
So we took this out on the bid in December.
Thank you.
For now.
Now.
I don't know. Right, so, so we can get them for December and have them approved for first of the year.
Oh, I thought you wanted motion on it, okay, yeah.
And authorized public hearing for draft five-year recreation plan, December eleventh. Two thousand thirteen. At four P M, two thousand twenty-three. Um, I think that's something we should talk to both is the ADA on that.
I know, I was just gonna say, very, very, where are you about two months ago when we were finishing off?
Yeah, I renewed it.
But that's where the public would come in, so when we have that.
I like public comments.
We can have her adjust things or.
Well, if you were available, they left it to you, well, yeah, they'll come to you.
Yeah, then we can still make our judgments.
Right.
You want me to be just answer questions on the panel or?
There's a, there's actually a, an email link, if you go to the county's website, Neil, there's a, you go to the. Commission, the meeting minutes, our packet's on there, everything you were looking at, there's a link in the, this is about the fifth document there, or Q pad. Send them directly to them.
On our main page, right here in the middle, actually.
Okay.
There's a link to contact Julia Jagger.
Okay, so they're gonna be here.
Right there, yeah, those are the folks that are actually working on and on their website.
Okay, I'll talk to.
Send her, you know, this is the public review period for you to contact her.
Okay, I was going to do that, but I didn't, I wanted to talk to you.
No.
Both, both is fine. Yeah, yeah, very much.
Otherwise.
That date sound good, to everybody? You know?
Yeah.
Right, cause I could say something like. Number eleven, public defender, one year Westlaw subscription in the amount of hundred fifty dollars per month, come out of. Twenty-six. Fifty-five. Zero, zero, eight, twenty-five, which I don't know that, that's all it is.
Into, into the defense fund.
Okay.
If I could, I've been, um, working with public defender's office. To try and do a, um, joint. Proposal to Westlaw. Uh, it's been, they're, they're hesitant to engage me in, in the process or way to a confidentiality and. And their search techniques and tactics, which Westlaw has informed us is not an issue, they can do two separate licenses. Um. Uh, you know, we have our system, I think you should, if you're interested, if you approve this, which would be a, a positive thing. Um, in this week, I intend to do one last ditch effort to try to get us a discount. So, um, I don't come to before you in the next budget cycle asking for the same thing. Well, we could have got it cheaper, right now, the prosecutor's office uses an inferior product to this product. Um, I would like to be on an even playing scale with them. Uh, but I gotta, I gotta do a little more legwork, I hope to have it to you by next week.
And if we have two subscriptions, it's cheaper.
That's, that's what he's hoping.
Yes.
It's two separate subscriptions.
It is, the only difference here is that, um. Their money is free, their money, not free, it's state money.
Right.
If I want to be able to even play and feel down as far as my legal research abilities, it's gonna cost our citizens direct money.
Another.
Yeah, so, another unfunded mandate, um.
Being fourteen hundred dollars a year.
Yep, um, and you.
Work on this this week a little bit, so by next meeting?
Yep, I'll have it done by Monday, um, to decide whether we want to continue on our existing contract, we, I have a contract with LexisNexis that expires in. Early next year, um, and like the Westlaw people, I did negotiate out, uh, three or four months free. If we do go with them, but I'll have all that finalized for the board by next week. Um, so that way we're all just using the same product, and i- i- just for your information, we give. The, this fourteen hundred dollars is like a tenth of what we actually give to the Westlaw company every year. For our online public access terminal, our county has to provide a law library, I think we can do it cheaper. Um. With through the LexisNexis program, so what I'd like to ultimately do is move our law library to LexisNexis and move our prosecutor to Westlaw. Right now, it's in reverse. So, but I'm, I'm figuring that out, and I'll have the information to you, uh, before your packet comes out.
If we push this one till next week.
Well, you can consent to.
Yeah, we're gonna. I. Oh, back home.
Yeah, I'd rather go straight forward with it.
Census.
Thank you.
Yes.
Number twelve, um. The striker A E D for the courthouse. About eighteen hundred dollars, Superior Health Foundation grant. And that is, we've already got that, don't we? That come in, the grant came in.
But that's only part of it, and the rest is.
Yes, well, we're just.
They said the one we want is a little. Over and, but they, yeah, but that's what we use.
That's what we have on our ambulance service, that's what we use in our, in our.
Something in the state.
A little bit more expensive for the life pack one thousand. But in the long run, it. It matches up with what we would be coming, so the pads would match up.
So you, you can come in, you can hook yours up without having to.
Because I, I didn't realize, but it's a little more expensive for that product. For the light pack itself, but the pads are actually cheaper than the other ones, which. Yeah.
Thank you, any questions on that?
I'm kind, kind of confused here, are you saying that the ones you have are the same as this one?
No.
We have, we have to on our basic life support, ambulances have life pack one thousands, these are basic. So they have, we have those same types of, um, light packs for our staff members for those rigs.
They give us a.
The striker, the light pack is owned by striker now, so.
They give us a grant for a cheaper one, but we're using a little bit more expensive.
We want to upgrade a little bit.
Right.
Okay, so you're going to the more expensive one.
Right.
And how much is that?
Just shy of a thousand, for the difference.
Thousand dollars.
And this is the same one that you'll be getting Mickey Oak and Rock River.
Right, the big thing is too is path, and you guys keep pads on hand?
We do, for sure, yeah, we have to, yeah.
So we, the dot or. The order goes always different, you said the pads are cheaper for these ones than the other ones.
And it keeps us more consistent across everything, so, and they're compatible with what the ambulance crew is gonna show up with.
Right.
So that saves time. Uh, you realize how sticky those pads are, you're waiting, they go ripping those pads off, they're not very comfortable. Yeah, but, so they'll save time there by not having to rip pads off, put new pads on, just because the.
And we can always leave that pad set with you guys.
Any questions on that?
Nope, save lives.
Consensus? Fourteen, um.
Thirteen.
Um, this is one I knew that, there's a north destruction bid for ambulance garage in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars. Um, that did not go on bids yet. Do not believe.
That is to finish the work that he started.
Well, it's not, this is a new project on the other end of it, yeah.
That's where I.
So. You know, as long as the bids are concerned, eat your own, but that's just gonna wait out a lot, we don't have anybody to bid on these. We, we've had this in the past year, we have nobody.
But we have to publicize it, clearly.
Then we'll do that, but the, the, the plan is to get, we have to on the, on the ambulance side part, not what we just had, the, the bedrooms are separate. This is on the, the garage side, we need our electricals hanging off the ceiling, our cords are hanging out. Now that we have four ambulances in there and things are going through water, it's a safety issue, number one, and we want to keep the building. Working properly, and, and right now, this would be the, the last main. Part of, so it would be electrical, new walls. Uh, new stuff around the walls, new lighting and new fixtures to go, because our rigs have to stay plugged in.
Well, we bring this up before too, and the other part, it didn't go through. It did make it through building to grounds and it didn't go for bid. Um, we can't have that happen, so we need to put this though, to public, to public bid. I mean, he might be the only one that comes with a bid, but we still believe we have to do that. We want to, we, we know for this. Uh, that's what I'll come with me, um. Any discussion on that? First.
I think, uh, we should put a limit like, so next Monday, we're able to.
A shorter bid time.
Five days or whatever.
Do you want to just put it on the website like I'm gonna do with the?
I think we all realize Norm's the only one that's gonna bid it, but we, we have to fulfill our legal requirement.
Yeah, right.
To put it out. And allow somebody else a chance to bid on it.
But both of tomorrow due by four P M on Friday. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Can I make, get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Some, something we need to know or.
Um, I was just thinking, maybe Mr. Johnson should have the opportunity to submit a sealed bid as well. Uh, we right now, we published what he's charging us, um, which is technically public information, however, uh, he may. Deserve the opportunity.
That's right, I liked when I seen that, was.
Yeah, we have to.
All we do, yes, I believe he should. I mean, he does have a little bit of a head start by.
He's already seen it and did it where they lost those, but it's.
It's great, I think we need to put that in, we have a motion second, our roll call on that. Mr. Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Odo?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber?
Yes.
Number fourteen, we appoint. Starts on list to the elder library board for three-year term. Firing twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
Yeah.
Sorry, sir.
I think you reappoint her.
Any discussion on that? Consensus?
Yep.
Yeah, number fifteen appoints D Mac and, yeah, the county library board for three year.
Since we just had somebody step away, so we do another opening, so.
Any discussion on that one?
It sounds good.
The census? Number sixteen. Twenty twenty-three C O L A community. Two retirees in the amount of. Two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents.
Is that a piece or is that together? Is that a piece or is that together?
That's together. You got up pretty good on that.
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yep.
Yes. Seventeen, committee recommended for twenty twenty four of the county government group insurance renewal. Yeah. One to opt out and eighty twenty employee sharing.
Uh, that is gonna include the change in the dental and the optical, right?
Yep.
They're gonna stick with same Blue Cross plan they had, but there's a better optical and dental option. But actually a lot more people are gonna accept they pay a higher percentage to providers. So, or there's some of the employees running the, the special dentist that don't wanna take. Uh, Delta dental, I think is what it is currently, because their percentage is so low that. Like, well, we gotta pay our people too. So. It was a, they worked pretty hard and there was a good amount of employees that came through and. There just, there was one other option on the table, but it just, nobody could quite get enough information in a short time to be comfortable. On that, so.
Was the insurance cost went up?
About seven point three four percent, I believe is what, just over seven percent is what it was increase.
Yeah, and the same, the bulk of it is in the retirees, the retirees compared to last year, the active employees. The, the, the biggest increase you're gonna see in that fringe line, the retiring. Overall, the active employees.
I mentioned that before at the second meeting. L M A S, their insurance went down fourteen percent.
Yeah, because they're a larger group. We're gonna explore that option next year, to possibly do it soon. We have to submit to Blue Cross or to the provider in advance.
And we're gonna start the process much earlier. People to make sure that, that their medications are gonna be covered, that their provider's gonna be covered. Or you're just running out of time for people to get everything verified that you need to.
Well, you had, in this committee, did you have unions involved in?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there was a great turnout, I think, those. At different bases of each one too, so.
Well, we'll find out next three days, so.
So, yeah, so the, the committee's recommendation was the. Go with that.
Any question?
I sure like to have you look into that, like.
I think they've already.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's definite plans for.
We have to have a plan.
We're learning a lot here.
Yeah.
I can tell you on that?
Yes.
Number eighteen, anybody got any cost savings idea or revenue sources? We just heard one good one, but welcome to more.
I have one idea. It's a, you guys have a, a land bank here, so all properties. Um, just one idea is, is try to see if we get the inventory of any, uh, non-used housing land. And see if we can get, uh, I, I have grant writers. And see if we can get some funding like under like a, a community block grants or anything like that to build or to rehab. And you increase the housing. There's a housing shortage in this county. And if we can get people here, it adds on, there's at least people, twenty people right now that would move here. That's twenty people paying taxes. So, like you said, we have a small community, but we can grow this community. And there's plenty of. I don't know what the inventory is like, but I think. Even talking to the real estate people, things like that, if we get grants and say, hey, we like to buy these up, and you already, already have housing. Commissioned, so you can put under that umbrella or something like that, and then they're bringing revenues and provide houses. And the thing is, another thing is that, that employee, lawyers. Are losing money because they can't, they don't have any employees to work for that. So. You know, uh, National Park Service, I even talked to somebody there, they're losing employees because no, they don't wanna travel, travel all the way from Grand Prairie, no offense, but. You know, five days a week and even in, in twice a day. Going back and forth, that's a lot of money on gas and things like that. And so if we could provide housing in Grand Prairie, Chatham area. Out in Union City, there's a lot of. Look, there's a lot of open lots I see. Uh, my dad's in real estate, so I see this stuff all the time. So. I, I don't know, the land bank, we could work together. I'd love to be part of that project too.
Me too.
Because I, I, it's, it's, it's needed.
Yep. People drive from Newbury to Grand Prairie to wait tables. And the land banks meetings are?
Usually the second Wednesday of the month.
I did, I do have a question. It's kind of. Elgin County has lost in the last ten years about two thousand residents. Where are these houses? Who's in these houses? People left. How do we have? You know, you know what I'm asking here, Neil? How do we? How do we not have, uh, excess amount of housing since so many people left?
I think they, they transformed into Airbnb's. Investors gobble up a lot of them. Uh, but vacant land, that's what I was looking at more as the bill. Um, the inventory, if you talk to any real estate agent, they'll say the inventory is low. Where there is no inventory. There is houses for sale around here, but a few are far between. And people are doing for sale by owner type of situation. Whereas the, I think some of them have been sold. They got torn out and just vacant mine. Um, another thing too is, is. I, I just see that there hasn't been in the industry solid enough, like big enough. Like we get the paper mill, prison, whatever. We need more industry to attract those other houses. There are hous- housing. Uh, places and the people that like, well, my parents' land, let's say. That's in the family. So you got in the family, there's no building, there's nothing going on. Uh, a lot of my siblings are, don't live in the area. You know, you got people from Baltimore, California, things like that. They don't care about the land, they're just sitting on it. So you can't build on it. So it depletes the, the inventory some more. But I think if we discuss with these people and say, there is some availability, what can we do to work together? Um, yeah, where is the two thousand inventory of, of, of housing?
Yeah.
That's a great question, because I have no clue, but that's why I talked to land bank and say, what is the inventory in this county? What is, what's going on? Are you guys burning down your houses or what are you doing? I mean, I don't know. And that's what, it was a big mystery to me when I moved back here. I thought it was growing and I was like, oh, great, awesome. And then I hear, oh, there's a housing so shortage. I'm like, what? Everybody's renting everywhere, but then Airbnb's, uh, trains got massive. This one investor has what? Cannibal? He bought one of my, you know, people, person I knew his house. And I'm like, holy cow, are you kidding me? So, and then people are converting their houses into Airbnb's. That's great, but what about the people that live here year long, year round, you know? Where, where are we gonna stay? And that's, I think we build or we rehab whatever we can find. And that's to, that will take a, you know, considerable effort in the committee to, to do that, but I, it's possible. To find that answer too.
I think with the aging population, um, you find a lot of single people living in homes. You know, my home used to have five people in it. Now there's one.
Right.
I, I know another big house right next to where I rent. It used to be full of kids, you know, now there's one person living there. So I think we also have a big inventory of, um, homes that are occupied by one and two people.
Look at the school, look at the graduate houses. That's gonna tell you right there where people live.
Yeah.
Your kids.
There's also a problem with, uh, inheriting houses. As you start to see people start to unfortunately pass along, they're, they're giving them to their kids that no longer live in the area. So the kids are having them and then it's a vacation property for them. They're here maybe eleven, you know, eleven weeks at most a year. But then they're still owning, they're still paying the taxes. I know there was an incident. Down in Limestone Township, actually Limestone Township is where I've heard the vast majority of these situations happening. Is that there's just empty houses sitting there because the children no longer live in the area. Um, and then also one that impacts me directly is employee. I don't know how the math works in terms of making sure that employee housing works out for everybody, but. I wouldn't be able to live in Alba County if I didn't have my drone friend still working for Tom Delosse. You know, everybody that lives above A Burger right now are role employees. We don't have kids. So you've got apartments that used to have families in them, but now are employee housing. You've got multiple houses that are being renovated, that are being turned into housing for day one workers. Uh, that are being turned in for, uh, um, middle, middle income housing. But it's all directly attached, attached to a job. So if you don't have that job anymore, you don't have housing anymore. Um, there's, this is a pretty, pretty deep and complex issue. Um, everybody has to blame it on just one.
Money saving idea.
How did we get to that?
It, it's money, it's, it's money revenue.
Right.
As next, because a lot of those other housing issues don't have the same taxable income values that you have. You'd be able to have more taxable income for your municipalities and the county as a whole, if you did have people living in them older.
No.
Dash run, but that was my idea.
Thank you.
But I would hope, I'd love to get into it.
Right now.
It is a, one of my advocacy that I wanna do with the city and, or the county and the city. And I think if we just talk to the retirees or whoever they, they're in their houses too. It's just about asking, find out who owns it. Hey, are you willing, whatever, but we get a, a plan together with a pool of money. Kind of like a trust type of situation and then say, hey, we're gonna build. Uh, habitat for humanity, does stuff like that, you know, we can get resources. It's just a matter of finding out.
But if you're, if you're living in it, you're homestead in it. If you're, somebody's living in it. My homestead, that's all the tax. If it's in commercial, you got a bunch of renters up there, you're paying twice the tax.
Right.
So it's more tax.
Vacation home, it's even more tax.
Right, but, but if we're employees, they get to write off that.
But it doesn't help our, also touch.
Because it's, it's, it's retention, it's retention of your employees and therefore it's tax deduction based on. On your property tax or on your tax? So that doesn't go on our.
Right.
So that's still, we still get. As a colony, but federally, under federal tax, income tax, they get to. Take it a break.
The county gets more tax for a non-homestead?
I believe so, one thing.
I don't know, I pay, I pay less taxes because.
I think it all goes in the school. The non-homestead. I don't think the county, doesn't matter who owns the house.
It comes, it comes into the county. It goes to the schools in our county, but it stays in our county. Any other ideas? Grab a little. We're, we're, we're. Number nineteen, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. Number twenty financial matters. The appropriations. None, for bills, the. That was.
Not me this month.
The group financial reports for all funds. And the authorized treasurer to transfer cost allocation monies from funds. General funds in the amount of three hundred and forty three thousand, six hundred and ninety two dollars. See sheet.
Just the one that was supported or the board did for the budget, but we didn't last a year ago. So this would have been from, uh, everything that was done in twenty twenty one. Twenty, 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 which was five years ago, twenty one and twenty two.
Cross allocation this year, twenty two.
Any questions on that?
Nope, I, I got a question. And we gotta go back to thirteen or twelve.
Alright, okay.
About that.
We pull that out until. Or comment?
Okay.
Any questions on D?
No, sir.
Ben? And number E, authorize the treasurer to create a. Fund, number three oh one termination fund. This is, people retire to have something to. Monies to pay them instead of having to go and dip into our funds.
Every time.
Every time some retires. And we can have.
Take it from.
Right, have a fund there. We know just by, you might as well average two people, you can retire out of a. Sure, the people.
Vacation buyouts, that kind of.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we can get some kind of idea with the, the average of what we have out there, vacation buyouts. And put some money into that fund so we have it in the future. Or robbing out of Peter to pay Paul, because we didn't have it.
Right.
In a bunch, in a budget to do.
I'd see Pam nodding, so I'm assuming that's a really good idea.
To be, it would definitely be better to do that.
Yes, that happened to keep coming back.
Because we had to take that here, so we can prepare for it.
Consensus? Okay, now to twenty one resolutions. A resolution, smidge, mileage proposal in mileage language.
Fun down there.
Great renewal, no heavy.
Right, no resolutions should put it on the ballot, correct? I'm gonna rattle them to make sure.
They wanna, they wanna go on the February.
Put that up there. Put it up there. We're trying to find it. Any questions on that one?
You know, the same mileage we, we have for the library.
Consensus?
Order to the voters.
If the number twenty twenty three dash eighteen standard limitation. The state and or local government emergency measures.
This, this, uh, resolution comes to us from, um, Living, Livingston County. And along with that resolution, once that's passed, with another resolution to establish a health advisory board committee. For commissioners, and that's, so I'll look at that. Did I give three Mike?
I've seen that about, I don't think David, you gave it to me Joel at our last meeting. That, that next one there.
Okay, would you give one, Rick?
Different one, there's, there's a follow.
It's a follow. Which is not in ours.
Hasn't been through the committee.
No, but we'd have to. Get this one through before we, this wouldn't be any good to us.
Okay.
You, I give it to you, right?
Yeah, I got that one here.
Um, so I think this would answer a lot of the questions that you guys are talking about.
We have to deal with what's, that's a later issue.
But it, it does point out, you know, if we were to, it wouldn't be us. Of people in the community that have information, that sort of thing. I would say from. I would say from what I'm reading there, you know, the public makes, you know, a really good point that. From what they're reading, you're gonna tell us that that's five people are going to say, hey, we don't think that we should have to wear masks. In a moment, so after thirty days of the health department making a rule, we can go, oh, we don't want to anymore. That doesn't sound right from the way that it's read to the public.
Just to, if I could, commissioners, just to be clear, there's, if that's what it said, there's no way I would have just checked a box and said. This is, this is legal.
Right.
I would have had a lot more comment on it, but the way that the rest of, the one resolution that I reviewed is written, there's nothing, it, it's, it's inoperative. It says, we strongly encourage, we would, we would, we recommend. It doesn't, it doesn't put the county in any legally binding position. Which is why I, I said, I said that it doesn't count any legally binding position. As far as, you know, the advisory board, I would wanna check into a few statutes uh, before that would be something that. That's, I would say is legal, but uh, this is a whole nother.
Yeah.
Right, resolution that had, would have to go to, you will have that point anyway before we made this. I am confident that the resolution before the board as it stands and its operative effect is not illegal.
Just wanted to make sure that we're.
Gonna be completely open and honest. We used to include that sheet that the prosecutor's talking about. I've seen it in some of the old minutes that had. Prosecutor, the treasurer and the committee members, whether they, whether they recommended it or not, whether there's a. This sub resolution actually comes to us with a split decision. I did not recommend. I do not recommend we adopt it, so I'm the committee, but we just have to bring it to the board for the board to decide, so.
I still think we gotta get this resolution processed. It's still, no matter how.
First, these are things we're gonna, we're gonna start on this whole, yeah, committee resolution, the whole thing. Streamline it, make it easier.
Can I ask, as a county resolution, are you saying you speak for us township?
Yes.
And the city?
Yes.
That's interesting, you think maybe we might be in the conversation too?
You, we got a city representative?
Well.
We have a county.
Let's see where.
There's, there's nothing including townships from the.
Yeah, it's specifically on the title is from the board of commissioners. So we're not saying that munising township, Rock River Township, Limestone Township, we. I don't think any of our resolutions have.
No.
That kind of wording that we're saying that that's what you think as well. I think it's just this body.
And those resolution committee meetings are open to the public and everything else. You know, you're welcome to come. It'd be nice to see people at these committee meetings.
One other lady that sent an email to me directly to.
Kind of waste of time to tell you the truth myself, so I'm not gonna put a lot of effort into it, but I was just wondering your thoughts of whether. That they're representing us.
It's one way to give our thoughts out there or our opinion out there to the state. Which a lot of times has no power. If they just gonna overrun you, they're gonna overrun the county, they're gonna run the township. They're gonna tell you what you're gonna do and what they're gonna do for you. Hopefully we can get enough weight to them that they can say, oh, maybe you don't want to do that. We do have that at the end.
So where are we going with this one?
This one here?
Do we need a consensus? We should not touch this for a minute and.
Um, it's on, it's on our agenda. We need to go first consent upon it.
I do not consent. I do. Well, consensus has to be everybody.
Right. This will have to go to the next, it will not be on the consensus. Okay, committee reports, twenty-two. Rick, you any committees?
Well, you have, well, the insurance.
Went over that pretty well.
Airport committee, we haven't had a meeting while you were gone. We have gotten quite a bit of work done up there. We got some fencing up, it looks very nice. The rough framing and the rough wiring are done in the terminal and in the. Dick and Jane isn't the right word anymore, but the, the shared bathroom, the dorm style, you know, they got that framing in. No, 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 well, but just that, that shared bathroom, that whole, you know, basically like. The old dorm rooms where here's your dorm room, here's your bathroom, and then here's your other dorm mates on the other side of the bathroom.
Yeah.
That's what we've got, so. We're making good progress on that. We're expecting to do the electrical inspection, I believe Thursday is what they're shooting for. So they can get the insulation and get the walls dry out and the ceiling drywall, then keep moving forward. Try and make as much progress as we can inside this one.
Thank you. Uh, I was at an LMAS meeting and that's where I got the fourteen percent. And it was really not much after that. Long ride in rain. Better snow. Yeah.
I had a very busy October, I'll just say that, it was all over the place. Um. We didn't have, yeah, you had fun, I'm sure. We didn't have brown filter land bank this month. Um, DHS there wasn't much. I. Um, attended the veterans um. Board and everything went smoothly for everything that we were working there, which I'll just say. That went very nice. It was absolutely enjoyable the entire time. Becky just blows my mind, she's amazing, so, um, and then. Q pad, um, one of the big things that they talked about was um, trying to find a way. To have a grant writer under their belt. Um, people need grant writers. All train is, was talking about how they've missed out on so many grants because they don't have anybody to write a grant. So we're.
We need a grant writer.
We're crying, Q pad really is thinking about a way that they can budget that and make it available. Just somebody to write the grants, so that's something they're working on, um. Otherwise, I think that's all I got.
I haven't been around. Number three correspondence. Um, or comments?
I would say I'll just, as a board member saying, not just as a part of the veterans, it just. If anybody is a veteran or knows somebody, they really should attend that. It's a great way to show support. Um. It was great food and lots of laughs and it was a good time. And I went last year and it was the first year and I'll tell you. Just winning the election and being, husband being in town, it was really, it was almost overwhelming, but we went this year and it was a. Totally different thing. I can't wait for next year now, so. And that was really great because uh, Becky didn't tell Sunny that she submitted his name until he won. And he got passed over for the UP Veteran of the Year, so it was kind of awesome seeing him come in as a state winner, so. I'm sure she'll be submitting mornings again.
And enough people twisted his arm, he actually went to the ceremony. He wasn't, he wasn't going to.
He had twenty-six people go down in support of him from our town, so that was great to see too.
His whole family.
Yeah.
Mickey, comment?
Uh, I'll agree with her. I was at that banquet and it was, it was tremendous. Uh, I do have a question on number twelve.
Yep.
Where's the monies coming from for that extra amount?
Oh, sorry, that, that's the. Remaining all the interest from our family.
Coming from where?
It's the same place we took the eighty.
There's still some leftover interest, find it out.
Good to have that. In there.
Yeah, those numbers make sense.
I appreciate Neil coming here and pointing out the things that we didn't do.
We didn't know.
Have, have no idea and uh, I hope we can.
I believe we can.
Work at getting that.
We really do. I don't know if we can hire a, just an eighty-eight coordinator, but I'm hoping that we already have. Some assets, resources. Resources that already have that in or that can, because it might be best to. That's why we both use Q pads and things like that, that they do all UP.
Yeah, I, I never thought about that when he talked about coming in, in the, I never thought about that.
The drain pans?
Yeah. That would be hard to get. If you got stuck in there, how you get out of it?
Do not like that new design, that the southern design is not made for following around here and I did. I yelled at the city for years when I owned downtown and I was nothing but didn't know what I was talking about. They knew what they were doing, they had engineers, they're all themselves, yeah.
That's for me. Um, I don't have anything, what I do wanna say is um, big kudos to Joel. Their whole system, I don't, many people know both now, you can go right online and watch our meetings. Our haul, it takes a day or so for them to get them up there or whatever, but. You don't have to drive in, I mean, we like you to stay here, but it's not a. Hopefully it'll help all the people in the big, in the outskirts of the county, they can see what's going on and not have to be here. Or hear second fiddle and not know exactly what's going on, so I know that was a lot of. Extra work on Joel to get all this and figure out the tech stuff, cause I'm beginning of us with. Grabbed it, but it's working. I'll let go what Dean had to say about that, you know, it is nice. I know preparing when I, when I took on this position. Trying to go back and read, you get a lot more from watching the video of the meeting than just reading the minutes. There's a lot more information, there's a lot more detail there, so I think it's a great asset for us to have. Uh, also, I'd like to speak real quick to the, to that resolution. I know there's a lot of debate about it. Uh, as I said, I did not recommend it. I feel it has no direct impact for the citizens of our county and is therefore just a political statement. And not something that we need to avail ourselves at this time. We're a small county, folks, there's less than nine thousand people. The city of Marquette has more than twice as many people as our entire county. I checked the census numbers this morning. We should be striving to find that middle ground that benefits everyone and not for fanning the fires of disagreement. We know it's a whole strong personal opinions favoring one side of the political spectrum or the other. Were mistakes made during our most recent once in a lifetime pandemic? The last pandemic of this scale was nineteen eighteen. Of course they were, we're all human. By our very nature, we're gonna make mistakes. What separates us is that, and so we go on and we learn from the good and the bad choices that were made. In an effort to make better choices in the event things like this happen again. The fact, whether a law is unconstitutional or overreaching or not. Is a matter better determined by the actual courts, not the court of public opinion. And if it is found to be flawed, it then falls to the legislatures, be they state or federal, to correct that. Thank you all.
I know, you know, a grant writer. Oh, yeah, that needs you.
I wrote down, we asked that, wondering if like, uh, like Mac, like the county association, do they have someone, because I know. A lot of associations will have some.
Mac does a lot of ours, I think it do most of ours, okay?
They will.
They will.
Haven't really used them lately, but two big successful ones, both written by Gabriel at Mac.
Yeah. And that's why we, we do need any kind of. Administrator or something like that in the county that will decide that it comes to that point, I think we should look more towards a grant writer. Position.
Right.
Then. Right.
I mean, I know somebody who actually said, I love writing grants. And I'm like, do ya? But they don't live in our town, they don't live in the county or anything, so I don't know the rules of all that, but I know somebody who's like, oh. If you need anything for something particular, I love writing grants. I have heard the words, I love writing grants. Well, I have to take a little more into that then.
Got that comments?
Joel?
So kind of a multi-faceted thing here, the, the resolution that you just approved for the. Language, the library village.
Yeah.
I just got back the end of renewal language, I'm sure if you'd like that on the February. Um, I got it back too late to put through executive finance. And it's too soon, uh, we won't have enough time before the next one, because the language cutoff is December fifth. So.
On our end.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna put it on the agenda as an agenda item for same thing, resolution approved village. Language for the ambulance.
Yes, we have to have that.
Everybody thinks that's a good idea?
Thank you.
Prosecutor? Uh, just a couple of things, thank you on the insurance thing, really work on that. You know, we don't pay the highest wages in the land here in Alder County, but we can, when we're enticing people to come work here and they tell them, hey, we actually have really good insurance in our county. Uh, that often helps uh, bring people in, especially family people, which we're looking for. Um, if you are looking at grant writers and stuff like that or a position to be held, keep your, keep your executive officers in mind. Um, we all administer grants out of our departments. Um, I can tell you that I would love for somebody else to do that besides my staff, we have other things we could work on. But we have one, one major grant that we administer out of ours. Um, and we, we used to have two, but now the, and the friend of the court office has it now. But um, so, you know, if we could bring somebody in that would take all that heavy weights off of our departments, something like that. Or if that's not a feasible thing, that would really tailor how we look at a new person. Uh, just lastly, as far as our office is concerned, we're steady as she goes. Had a pretty robust trial docket set up for Q one, hoping to conduct two or three jury trials in the first three months next year.
Attorney Department, Health Management.
Just got back as well, so.
Thanks for all the work.
Well, I do think we should use Q pad more for writing our grants, if you have anything in your mind. I talked to Gabriel, the one that has written for us, and asked him, I said, are you still writing grants for the counties? And he said, yes, you are.
I think our biggest, our biggest problem is, there's grants up there that we don't know. We gotta, we gotta know about the grant.
We should be able to.
He would research it for you.
I'm assuming they probably generate lists of. What's available, what, what's coming, what's available now.
Sure, grants are huge. I mean, when you're, if we can pull in half million dollars into our county grants. And pay somebody fifty thousand dollars to do it, I don't see a negative further.
Well, we, we were able to submit today at three thirty about our three hundred thousand grand for E K. Won the Brown family to submit for, so it hadn't been in today, so. Finally, yeah, so we were able to submit that about three thirty today, hopefully we'll get that grant.
And then read public comments?
Hi. My name is Joan Potter Summer. I live at East four seven seven five M twenty-eight All Train. Um, oh, not a township though. Um, I'm also coming to you as the chair of Acres. Alger County Renewable Energy Solutions. And to make you aware that the Michigan Environmental Council has recently received a hundred thousand dollar grant. Awarded by the Department of Energy's Energizing Rural Communities Program. The project title is Getting Cost Down in the U P. Acres was included as a partner in the council's proposal. The goal of the proposal is to empower communities in Alger County. To embrace renewable energy and home energy efficiency upgrades through community organizing, education. And connecting individuals and businesses to financing, technical assistance and experienced contractors. The project will focus on ramping up the home. The project will focus on ramping up the home retrofit. Architecture, working with the local utilities to deploy renewable energy. Generation and strengthen relationships among community sectors. This approach will help to ensure there's a shared long-term vision and plan for energy independence and sustainability. This project includes a series of community informational events to be held throughout the county over the next six months. These events are geared to educate residents of the county about options and opportunities related to renewable renewable energy. They are solar one O one. Michigan saves Green Bank financing. Deep dive into energy efficiency, cost savings, wasting less. Heat pumps. Jen Hill was legislative update, federal and state opportunities and community solars. The first of these events is being held on Tuesday, November the twenty-eighth at the gallery. Um, I have flyers here at that six o'clock, beginning at six o'clock, and I have flyers for you to remind you to come on out. And learn about the solar, if you just wanna pass them on down at the. Um, learn about the solar one O one and all the other topics that have to um with renewable energy in Alder County. Um. You talked about the airport. I I know I've I've said it before, but uh having solar on the roof up there or. A a ground mount up there might help with reducing, you you know, you could pay for the electricity up there. So that's an an idea, but you know, um, but so there are experts that will be coming to these different events and I would welcome you to come on out and and learn. As the the community learns as well.
There is an opportunity also, the old, they're not trained, you know, the old baseball field.
It all trained? My husband wanted to turn it into a dog park, but go ahead.
If anybody's got any ideas, I do know the the foresters are open to ideas on for a community based thing. Um, if it's a dog park or a. A grid for solar or something, you know, it's like they said, right now it's clear land, seriously. She doesn't do that many good. If they. All it's gonna do right now is. Bring in people for partying and stuff like that and trash, so if they can do something with it, if somebody's got. The foundation that.
Anticipated that we'll be taking these programs out to the the different townships. Because it is for all Alder County. It's not for munising. It's for Alder County, the residents, businesses there, so we're hoping on to. Uh, just share that information and and get it out there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is that Grant just for Alder County?
Yes. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, I I love the idea of doing more solar. Um, we have that big um dump in Chatham. That would be a perfect area to put up solar panels. It's just. Space with no purpose.
Oh, closes it to a power grid.
Really close because.
There's more things to look at, but yeah.
Cause I I think Northern does their lineman. Classes out there. And all that. They're not doing it anymore. But they could still do it if they wanted, because we have power out there.
The biggest asset would be the dam and the power grid that goes to the dam. We could jump on that. So it's close enough, yeah.
And so and then um the only thing else that I wanted to just echo the sentiments that I heard from Mr. Nettleton. I see the resolution as a speech kind of wrapped in a resolution. Um, and I don't know how that will be helpful to any of us. Um. Yeah, and that's all I have to say about that.
But.
Um, I had contacted Q pad this morning to um ask if they had grant writers to write free recreation brands for munising towns for next year. And they're they're having difficulty finding. Getting enough. Staff to write grants. They didn't say no. They said, we're looking at it.
I think they're pretty tied up.
They got that, but they're, I mean, they have how many counties, six counties? That they write grants for, so.
I also wanna comment, I absolutely hate the format of the new recreation plans. I find them so distracting and difficult to read with all these fonts and. Mini pictures everywhere. Um, I, you know, I read through the cities when they did theirs. I read through yours, you know, the one that's on the website. Not a fan.
You're hired.
We we have one. Look at munising township. And when they asked if we wanted the updated plan, I said absolutely not. They changed the words and the numbers. And now the economic. I said, I want I want the old.
So we should have asked for the old version? Mainstream, you get the old style.
Any comments?
Trevor Case, Rockford Township. Um, I I would applaud your your statement, um, Commissioner.
No, that was stupid.
I know, yes, obviously. Um, that. That was exactly what needed to be said. Um. Other thing I wanted to address uh is. If there's two resolutions that work in lockstep. Why aren't both of them being presented at the same time? That's a question that should be definitely be answered before. Proving one and then bringing the next one in the next time. Yes. I guess, and the third thing I would say is. I heard you guys say. That what we say and what. We say is just the board saying that. And that's not the case. You five represent Alder County, so what you guys say is the voice of Alder County, so you are speaking for the constituents in Alder. County completely, not one side or the other. So I just, once you guys, yes, individually, we all represent our own townships, but you guys are representing us at the. County level and you can speak for the county. I want to make sure that you. That's the way you look at it, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Michelle Ha from U S C Township, and I would applaud also what you have just said. And I would recommend that you put names last on your positions.
I got the money.
Who brought this resolution to the table?
No, go ahead.
That's, well, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Sammy Shager from Rockford Township. And what I'm curious about is. How this resolution was copied and pasted from Livingston County to Alder. Um, because it was obviously a copy and paste. That doesn't take any real thought or any real um work. So with that in mind, I I just wish that each one of you would. Just think about why you really want this resolution to be passed. It doesn't make any sense to me and after the last couple of years, I'll tell you. I'm sure my heart isn't the only one that's just really tired of advisiveness. And all I see is that coming from this. Um, I owned a business during COVID. I lost my mother during COVID. I couldn't be with her when she passed. I had to close my business. Um, we all survived. Um. And I. When things started picking up, so to speak, I had the opportunity to um host. Five celebrations of life. From people, young, healthy people who died of COVID. So, you know, I get real tired of the fact that it was. A non-into and, you know, we we just don't believe in that stuff. So, but again, you know, because of the divisiveness alone, could just think about that. I mean, do we have to have it? Thank you.
We need to make sure that everybody talking about the resolutions are over before I come to hand up. Um, I, so I was here with the Board of Campus Certmet. And certified the election and Joel was leading the charge on that, literally being the only person in the room. That had seen that side of the election process. I just thought everybody was right on the ball. People were asking relevant questions. They were, you know, conversating well. Uh, they understood their role and responsibilities and that I thought was really positive. You have four brand new people. And it didn't really matter what partisan group they were with because they were focused on. Just going through the right thing. And so I wanna thank, thank those four members, but also thank Joel and his staff for. Making sure that something that has become contentious in other locations did not and really kind of embodied the positivity. We all are counting in that process.
Good. I think we all, we're, we gotta work together. We're not perfect. We're not, you're not. We're just gonna try to find what works for it all. Anybody else? All along and I want.